They want to leave the wall and pay for these. That was important, though, because it made that number not look so here. Other than that, I think that we did do well. So much so, they all be going through that.
Yeah, and then the last piece of the puzzle was getting into really the fine tune aspects with labor attorney. And then that worked out extremely well, which will be the corresponding piece of business. And I think we've done our due diligence to bring forward a solid document to the board. I mean, this is the time to, if there's questions, by all means. But we had a little snap through here of somehow our meeting completely stopped, so I'm trying to get us back up. Any other questions for Blair and Cath in regards to the document? I mean, that's, we have, yes.
Just like to say one more thing. We look forward to working with you and your professionalism. I think it's going to be a highlight for all of our constituents and our whole community.
I look forward to it as well. You got to set up on it.
Anybody who, but yes.
If you see me again in 10 months or so, or you'll probably be seeing me again anybody, but I guess I'm bored because it's just a check.
Okay.
We have something also that we do like to have an annual, at least, at minimum, review with you in regards to how we're doing and if there are things that we can do to enhance that process.
Check it out. And sometimes we do well, you find out about it first. Please, if you see something that they're doing, give us a call. I know it's not, you really take the step forward.
And I'd say that goes the opposite way, too. If you think there's something we can improve upon, too.
It's been, it's been a pleasure thus far. I have proper communication with Cath and Doug and Eric and Blair as well. So I see this as being a good symbiotic partnership moving forward that would behoove our, our infrastructure. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to move forward with the contract with Fleyce and Vanderbank operations as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table by Trustee Polley. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Trustee Kroll. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Dunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Polley?
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Clark Kalavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Kroll?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes. God bless you.
We had some onboarding to do.
Yep. No, by all means, you know that, Sukas has some.
Thank you very much.
This will commence the 17th.
So we have before us a finalized, clean draft. And the only things that will be changed is that we've made the determination today on the 11th for a start date of the 17th, which now leads us right into a very good segue to the next order of business, which is the LOU between we, the Charter Township of Alpena, and the Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council. This is the second part of the F&amp;B contract. In good faith, we bargained with FOPLC in regards to the three employees internal that would be potentially impacted, but the impact is actually a positive impact. It is not a detriment. But we worked through that, the two bargaining sessions. And with our labor attorney, her guidance, we came up and basically met midway with some of the issues that they would like to see in terms of seniority, et cetera, et cetera. And everybody felt comfortable. We have a firm contract potential with F&amp;B, and we have a sound understanding with FOPLC. So at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to approve and sign the letter of understanding between the Charter Township of Alpena and the Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council in regards to the F&amp;B contract.
Make the motion to sign that contract. It's written.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to sign the letter of understanding. Is there support? It's been supported. Further discussion?
Yes, can you help me understand? Can I, for sure, quite understand what that meant? Which is us?
Yes.
Agree to extend? What control do we have over a two-year period that they're not our employees?
They would have to be responsible of maintaining current employee files. And the, the control mechanism in the current contract with FOPLC is one year. Their discretionary points were that they wanted the entire term of the first year of a contract with F&amp;B. So we met in the middle at two years, because why would we want to have to maintain non-employee employee contacts and contact information for any duration beyond the scope of the relevancy of typical union recall period, which is one year. So that was a middle ground maneuver. From my standpoint, Trustee Lappin is, having the faith that I do in the contract in which we just approved, it's a moot point.
I think so, too. But I just wanted to understand what, what that meant. And it kind of ties in with item number six, so that it.
So this, item number six was basically addressed and defeated as its current constant practice of Blue Cross Blue Shield benefits being paid at the beginning of every month. So they're, correct, if me, if I'm wrong?
Yeah, their health insurance.
So, and we were able to negate this as being a bargaining unit because, one, if the contract is going to be enacted on the 17th. And so they have, we've already paid for this, this month. So that's how we negated having that as an extension or a discretionary point to extend beyond into a secondary month.
Maybe I'm just confusing the word layoff.
Well, and they have to be, in this process, they are officially going to be laid off.
Okay.
And that's how the union wants it to be.
And if they're rehired, then it comes out, move on.
Yes. Well, yeah, it's, they're going to be, they're going through the application process with F&amp;B as were, was part of the bargaining concessions of, they had first right to refusal and first opportunity at, at those positions.
Right, okay. So then, and then I presume the PTO is not a?
PTO is already in the contract. They fought for it. They fought for something that they already had in the contract.
Okay, all right. I figured that was already sort of the intent. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? For no further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Polley?
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Clark Kalavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Kroll?
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes. And I'll sign that and give you, feel these, another signature on the back, and then we can get it back to them. Okay, moving forward into new business. Before you is the packet of information that we supplied to the Michigan Department of Treasury for the payroll reimbursement program through the CARES Act, PA 116 through 136. Michelle and Dana helped considerably because this was an arduous process. But within, we were able to look at the potentials of utilizing the CARES Act, and there is no guarantee to what would be a potential reimbursement at this point in time, but we have gone through all the proper channels to potentially secure repayment for the months of April and May in our two primary departments, that being our DPW, which I think, I mean, we had a total on DPW of, and I have to go back through these, of, do we have 14,000 total?
That's for one month.
Yeah. 14,000 for one month. And, so, and then for fire department, we had in, in the two months, April and May, we had roughly, I believe, $110,000. And that included payroll. So that was regular time, overtime, health insurance, and other ancillaries.
Retirement, social security, FICA, worker, oh, we didn't do work.
We done. So, so, long and short, we're looking to secure a potential reimbursement to fine tune of, yeah, because we had, in public safety, which would have been fire department, April would have been $43,127.72, and May was $60,292.41. Public health, DPW, would have been April, $14,379.25, and May, $21,196.27. So we're, we're in hopes that as that CARES Act starts getting sent out, we can at least hope potentially encapsulate some of the payroll expenditures. Are there any discussions? This was just informational, really. This isn't an action item. Norm?
So basically, we've sent in all this information to the state, and hopefully we get a blessing of getting some of this back.
Long and short, yes.
We may get something, we may get nothing.
Long and short, yes. But I, I do thank Michelle and Dana for their, it wouldn't have happened without their participation. And I couldn't have pulled out more hair if I tried when I got to a certain point. So, moving forward, this is, and Cash, could you just grab Chris Lewis? I want Chris Lewis to come in. The next item of business, and this also, again, is something just for the radar, and this will be something that's coming down the pipe from the state and has been for a while, but I figured, since we have our head assessor present, have him give some of the details. This is kind of a, it is what it is scenario, but I'll let him kind of start the communications. Flora is yours, Mr. Lewis.
All right. What's the question?
So just kind of give an overview of the AMR and the conundrum of what this potential is coming down the pipes from the state.
They did an assessing form, and part of that assessing form is for the local jurisdictions that came to any county to designate a designated assessor. Just in case one of the jurisdictions failed the year. If you, if you fail it, then you file a corrective action plan. And once they approve that correction action plan, the following year, they have a follow-up review. And a follow-up review, if you fail that again, then they have one or three options. You have a designated assessor, or the state, Michigan can assume you're accountable, or you're assessable, or, what would you call it? Or they can contact with a designated assessor of the county, so there's an assessor left.
Yeah.
So those are your options.
Yeah.
So, these are the four things they look for. What is their condition factors? Whether you have overrides, whether you have flat rates on there, and you do land evaluations. Those are just basic things. So it'd be, it's a fragile, non-compliant of those four, of one of those four things for them to initiate this for the second time.
So, Chris, that's what they look for when you, did you say it's the AMR?
A.M.A.R.
A.M.A.R.
And is that like a?
Audit of, of the Bureau of Assessing Requirements.
Okay.
And we, we conducted, yeah, and our, our last AMR was in 2018, and it's a five-year cycle.
So they're not due until?
2023.
2023. So, in that time, we got, the local jurisdictions are going to have to deal with the county, pick a designated assessor, because you got, you got an appointment. Otherwise, it's going to point through the county.
And there's only five at this level in the state thus far that have registered to this designated assessor. And none of them are in northern Michigan.
It was similar to last time.
Well, right now, I mean, that's why I, we just wanted to have this general conversation, because the state hasn't given, God bless, the state hasn't given any timeline, hasn't given any cost analysis of what the potential would be.
They're supposed to give you guidelines as far as, you know, what you're supposed to pay a designated assessor. And give you an example, let's say in 2023, every, all the jurisdictions pass their, you know, you still have a designated assessor, and you still have to pay this designated assessor to have that position.
Sounds like.
So the past five years, you're paying someone to?
Potentially do something that we don't need them to do because the state wants us to have it in place.
So does a designated assessor have to have a certain level of certification?
It depends on what jurisdictions he's taking over. But he had to be at least a, a bachelor or a master.
Master level three or four, correct?
All right.
Yeah.
This is why we, person to come from.
Well, and what, so, roughly, yeah.
There's only two, I think, Allenburg and Ted Summers, they have a level of three.
So there's only two regionally that would meet the state requirements to fulfill a designated assessor position. And that'd be Ted Summers, County Equalization Director, or Allenburg, who's a private contractual assessor who currently operates the assessing role for the city. Wellington, Long Rapids, several other smaller municipalities. The complexity therein rises, because I sat on a conference call with Mr. Summers and several other municipal, municipalities. Every assessor at that level has a cap of a taxable value that they can control in terms of their role. So we have as many questions and with zero answers from the state. There, the left hand unfortunately doesn't seem to know what the right hand's doing. But the fact of the matter is, we passed our last AMR, we're not up for AMR until 2023. And depending on the timeline that this is fully enacted, we're going to inevitably have an inter-local agreement and/or an associated cost for a service that would not have to be rendered, other than it's mandated by state.
How many municipalities, or how broad is the region that we?
Well, it's county by county. I mean, that's, it's just county by county.
And you have, you have one appointed by, I think, I don't know if it's you.
Yeah.
And would be likely that we split the costs equally?
That's a potential, and within, that's where the, the fine details will have to get hammered out at the county, is they're not really in charge of the assessing role, but they have the say of, they're, they're being put in, in a managerial position, and we just have to follow suit. So we're trying to get those answers, whether it's, it's an Allenburg, who's at least a locally, or Ted, but the county would then would have to, they're afraid of having him take, because this is not a small undertaking. And the unfortunate reality is, there are, I believe, one or two smaller townships in, within the county that have had issues with their AMR. So why is it one, if you don't have an issue with your AMR, you still have a logistical liability in terms of costs associated with a state demand?
Because they, you know, sort of the dashboard, they, they want to have a one bill, two guy, which, or gal, who's responsible, and they can.
Well, you have three options, which is, which is the reality. Contract with a new assessor at the, at the natural level, they can allow the FTC to assume the jurisdiction, or they can contract with a designated assessor. They only have, use a designated assessor. So, yeah, our, the local government, I would not choose a designated assessor that's designated simply because this is all assessing form, it's all moving towards countywide assessing. They do what, because initial, this initial assessing form included that supervisors could not be an assessor. And the only reason they had to be that is the bill, and because it's law, that supervisor is the assessor. In order to move behind with having a countywide assessing, or just have a few people do the assessing, it gets rid of that force of, of having a supervisor not being able to be an assessor.
So, and that, that really affects every other smaller municipality other than us, because every other township they're, they're assessing is, is a function of the supervisor. And that's where that state statute is, of as long as we have a head assessor with proper state licensures, then I don't have to fulfill that obligation. So.
The MTA, they'll put up a, a hop in the Michigan Assessors Association, and finally they back, back off that.
Yeah.
But within, I would say, the next 10 years, I would, this is, this all moving forth, yeah.
This is sort of one of those, because it seems to me that many of the local municipalities, smaller municipalities, have someone like an Allenburg, who's sort of the in-the-field sort of work, or subcontracted cost. And then they also pay that same person as an employee, the clerk. Is this sort of moving into, away from that sort of relationship, and so that?
Well, Allenburg, what he does when he takes over, first of all, he doesn't take over anything. And so he has a full re-appraisal. So in order to a full re-appraisal over this township, you're talking probably what Cody gave us, 57, $59 a parcel. So you're talking 300, somehow a thousand dollars just to take over, do a re-appraisal. Just to, for him to take it over, because he doesn't want someone else to do it. He wants to start from the cold, so, that's what he did, what you said, when he took that over. It's, he hires, probably go off a deal for it, and being Allen, which he's very good at computers and that, so he does, you know, he had a few broken error, guys, to do, you know, the process, kind of what I heard and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's kind of what I, what I mentioned, so, I think there was a, sort of circumventing the, the system of having in-house assessor, Allenburg's the guy that did the in-house stuff.
There's a few jurisdictions that, or few counties that have county assessors, over county as well. Not everybody uses them, but they do do that. So my first opinion, I think that's what they're moving for.
Well, it seems to me that 2023 is just a few weeks away.
Pretty much.
And once they do that, once they take away that, the local government, that is, while you guys don't use much of your insurance, that you don't have to do this office anymore. You know, once they start taking things away, well, we can spend the money off.
Laura, you got a question?
I was just going to ask, when you had mentioned about, like, the supervisor being the assessor, just for clarification of my own mind, but it was like, you know, if our supervisor had to be the assessor, I mean, he still has to have a licensure, he couldn't just say it. So you, that we through the process.
But like Ken Over, or, and Allenburg, and stuff like that, you know, their supervisor had, you know, they're at a level, you know, NCAO.
Well, and Dan, too, right? Dan.
Dan finally, I think this last year finished up his NCAO.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that, that's, that's a conundrum, is that's, when you don't have a, we as a population density base outside the city, in terms of within the county, have an assessor. And the, the city had the exact same scenario until that assessor retired, and then they contracted with an Allenburg. So now it's, I wanted to have this discussion, because this is something that the state is mandating. They don't have the rules of the game that they've created, laid out for us to follow. But this is, I wanted this on our agenda and on our radar, because this is going to be an anticipated expense sooner rather than later. Mr. Polley?
I think you also got to think about and remember that the state taxing and assessing their fondness of townships is not real strong. So they, they're doing all these things to slowly work it so that we get a little bit less. It's like the boiling, the frog in the boiling water. So we're just starting with this, but we have to deal with it. And knowing that what they're trying to do and where they're going with this, until things change, that's where it's going to go.
You got to figure, right now, we have, state cash position has thousands of units that we have to oversee, but if it moves countywide, they only have to be three.
Yes.
So, Chris, that's what I'm understanding, your recommendation when we get around to this designator would be to select someone who was already assessing for a municipality, rather than?
I would, you take, it's a jury, they have to, local governments and counties, they have to get together and decide. And it's, I think it's the majority of the local units that have to agree to it. So countywide, so, if you know what that's, have a majority of the units.
Yeah. This is, this is going to be, the potential with the timeline, we'll be working hand in hand with the county.
Just finding someone that the state cash position is going to approve, first of all.
All right, I believe that Allenburg was following through with his paperwork to become a designated assessor.
He's, he's the independent.
He is the independent, and outside of the county, he's the only one that holds the licensure levels.
Right now, he, the, the city is actually has a lower SEV and tax code than the township. So right now, really, he's over, because you only need a NCAO for the, for the, but they still got that.
Yes, Michelle.
So you'd have one designated assessor that does the whole county. So it doesn't matter what township or if you're the city, that we'd all have the same designated assessor.
And it, and no one, if one unit fails, they have to, you know, be that unit, or let's say three units fail, he's responsible, or she's responsible for three years. Then they have some assessor of revenue, or she, you or she becomes the assessor of revenue.
For five years.
For five years.
With the exemption of the potential, they can, yeah.
I think after three or something, petition.
Four years, they can petition.
I guess, Chris, you'd see them?
Yep, good and well.
Yeah, you can petition in a state expedition to the, we move there.
So, yeah, this is, these are conversations that still have to take place with the county and the city and every other municipality. We've had, I think, just two conference calls on it thus far. And then this past week, we got the letter from the State Department of Treasury, and then also the, the letter, which is very convoluted, of state statutes and law from the county equalization. So we're going to have to work on that, because the more questions we have, we have even more answer, questions to those questions. We have not gotten any of our initial questions from our first conference call replied to by the Department of Treasury.
So is the county kind of coordinating all that?
Yeah, Ted Summers actually set up a conference call. And so, because everybody's quite concerned, because one of the questions is, if we, the county decides on a designated assessor, let's just for conversation points, say it's, it's an Allenburg, well. assessor, uh, let's just for, for conversation point, say it's, it's an Allenburg, well, what are the cost potentials associated with municipalities already in contract with Allenburg? Do they have to, who's, what is the share, what is, because obviously, if there's a contract or an inter-local agreement, there's a service potential that needs to be rendered, and henceforth, there should be a cost associated with said service. So, there are zero answers to these questions.
Because he also, that was the problem too.
Yeah, and so, at a certain point, that's why I said, I mean, depending on how things really break out, he's going to be capped at a certain point of value.
Well, I was going to ask you a question, like, you grabbed a hearing, people are against, asked, so you want to answer, just now, peanut. So, I suppose someone like a bird could have a relationship with a peanut, with a peanut, I see. But it's true enough, an awful lot, though, yeah.
Well.
He hires people to do it.
Yeah, he, he hires the people to do his work, he's just the licensure, and he puts his Herbie Hancock on things. I mean, so, I just, like I said, there is no action that we can take at this point. If we need to call a special meeting, or if it coincides with a, a regularly scheduled meeting, uh, I wanted this on our radar sooner rather than later, because the state is force-feeding us this.
Does it come up with the governmental council?
Uh, it has not, because intergovernmental council has taken a COVID hiatus, and so, uh, in the first, uh, conference call, uh, Rachel from the city was involved, um, uh, Ken Lobert, we had several other smaller municipalities involved in the call, and we all put together a fairly comprehensive list of questions that I think we're all kind of spinning through our heads currently. And to that, uh, Ted Summers was sending that off to the Department of Treasury for clarification, um, and we haven't heard anything. So, they already have a, a timeline, they have a want list, they give you a direction with no roadmap of how to get there. Um, so, this was the first phase of this board being, hey, this is something coming down the pipe, which, which may or may not have a cost, to what level? I, I, I wish I had more answers for this board, but unfortunately, the state and the, the Department of Treasury, uh, has not been very forthcoming, as it stands. So, any other questions for Mr. Lewis? Thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Uh, moving on to the next item of new business is the R and R fire truck repair. Uh, this is also just a point of information, I do believe, this was a letter, uh, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, this was just a letter stating that at, uh, a point in time, I believe it to be in September?
September first.
September first, uh, their rates are going to increase. So, we just had that on the agenda, just as a conversation point. Do you have anything to add to that, or do you want to move on to the next item of?
Do you know what we're paying currently for?
Ninety-two dollars.
It's currently ninety-two dollars per hour, the rate is down to five.
Wow. That's a huge percentage on that.
Increased weight base.
So, what does that? So, it's eighty-two dollars an hour, well, we're behind the windshield, and that was a beautiful stop, so it goes a little under five dollars a mile?
Uh, it, it would, we have the, uh, uh, ironically, the regional mechanic for our R and R, helping the town, uh, city with them. So, we, we fortunately are, like, okay, two dollars per hour, for my, or my, I'm sorry, he's, he's made himself very available, like, two miles for, for coming, and, uh, six hours. So, and I do, just, just to remind the board, uh, when, when we say that there are simple source providers that have, that mostly are fire apparatus, because there are NPA guidelines on this, we can work out, like, certified as far as the ambulance, us apparatus, you know, the, the, to, uh, to those, uh, local devices, in particular, uh, mountain transmission, so, we have the problem, so.
Any questions for Chief on the R and R increase of labor and associated cost? Uh, it is a significant uptick. Um, moving on to the next item of business, which is the paid-on-call new hires, Chief?
Yeah, uh, I would like to recommend two new hires to the board, both of whom will be in the paid-on-call. The first one is a young man named Blake Scott, and Blake actually has been with us as a cad for several years. He has pretty much completed the cad program in, in turn, eighteen, is our cutoff date for the cad. Uh, we asked him if they're truly interested in continuing, please go out of paid-on-call application, or, you know, some of mine, which go to another township department, will be given that opportunity, and, uh, Blake so far is, is fit for example, in his attendance and pension, as part of the cad program, so I don't have any hesitation or recommendations, you know. Also, I think he did, he did already pass the background driving, um, from the Sheriff's Department, so, and, uh, physical, uh, agility test, he passed. The second, Lauren Kirby, who recently moved back into the area, she's already a licensed, a basic EMD, that's what she's primarily interested in, just to remind you guys, we have five spots on the roster, they're both EMS only, although, through the physical ability, she did express some desire to find out what officer, like, the side of the cheaper, employee, with, uh, did initiative EMS, but she just moved up, uh, into the area, which is the city area, of, of, of course, you go down. Um, I, I, I talked originally with your boss, and we had, um, the, the state auditor, again, uh, I wasn't aggressive with her, she completed the physical agility test, and actually embarrassed me a little bit, because she made it a little too easy. She, uh, she also, uh, had completed the background, very good record.
Any questions for the chief? At this point, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the hires of, it was, Lauren was the last, what last name on the?
Kirby.
Kirby? Vacuum?
Kirby?
Yes. Okay, copy that. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve the employment of two paid-on-call personnel, Blake Scott and Lauren Kirby.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion? We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? How many remaining open spots on the volunteer roster do we have, Chief?
Currently, we have approximately ten. We've lost several since, uh, people, specifically due to COVID, that this gets as a landmark in the timeline since March, a couple, uh, one was due to A, one was due to relocation for a job, et cetera, et cetera, that we, we've lost probably six, seven people since March. Do you have a sign-off on what's, or continue to be ready for those?
Any further discussion? Seeing, uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Laffin?
Yes.
Clerk Kalavich, yes. Treasurer Ellen Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crowe?
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Polly?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes.
Anything else for the greater good, Chief? Thank you very much. Uh, at this point in time, uh, but, yeah, well, we can go into it and then take it. Uh, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion, uh, to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege, uh, over the water litigation. We have a motion to?
Support.
And support, uh, support by Polian, uh, to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege, uh, water litigation, uh, further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Actually, I either, I, I will recant.
You want to?
I want a roll call vote for the closed session.
Clerk Kalavich, yes. Treasurer Ellen Summers, yes. Trustee Crowe?
Yes.
Trustee Dunkel?
Yes.
Trustee Polly?
Yes.
Trustee Laffin?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes. We are officially in closed session.